Thanks, everybody, for coming out. We're going to call our meeting to order at 6:35. And we'll begin with the invocation of the pledge. Heavenly Father, we gather today with gratitude for the opportunity to serve this community and to deliberate on the crucial matters of our municipal budget. We ask for your divine wisdom to guide us through these discussions to inspire thoughtful and transparent decision-making. Grant us the clarity to see beyond individual interests and to focus on the common good of our citizens. Help us to make just and compassionate choices that reflect your love and concern for the vulnerable among us. Bless the people who serve our city with integrity, courage, and a spirit of service as they work to manage these vital resources. May this budget reflect a commitment to stewardship, generosity, and the future prosperity of our community. We ask you for your blessing on our efforts, and may all that we accomplish be for your greater glory. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to item three on our agenda, public comments. Cheyenne, do we have any? So we will also have a public hearing tonight, so we'll have opportunity for both. Do we have public comments?
Definitely.
Great.
Oh, yes. My public comment was just to ask the public to be mindful and thoughtful of those who are speaking so that we can all hear them.
Cheyenne, would you say that was Barbara's call?
The other's over here.
Thank you. So, item four, public hearing. Public hearing for fiscal year 2025-2026 proposed budget. Item A is we'll open the hearing. The public hearing is very similar to public comments. The council will not deliberate with you. If you're making comments, we're receiving your comments, and then we'll move on to the deliberation phase while they work on the budget. Okay? So, public comments. Did you do a sign-up?
I did.
Okay.
Dan McJuckin.
Dan McJuckin, 12:34 PM. And I'm here today to say it's almost a waste of time for us to have this meeting. The decision's been made. This is not an illegal meeting. I sent a late today after hoping that the mayor would cancel this meeting and post it properly, meaning that the public has not had access to this budget until last Friday. And I was hoping that the mayor would repost, giving everybody the 30 days that we deserve as citizens so that we can protect our rights and then speak authoritative tonight. This hearing is foolish. Hate to say it, but who here has gone through the budget? I'm hoping the council has had time since Friday to go through it, but I know I haven't. Haven't had time. It takes, there's 30 days allowed for a reason. Now, I believe that there's no attorney here, and I believe that's on purpose. I believe that the mayor intentionally didn't ask Phil to show up so that this question couldn't be asked of him. And that is what you council members should be asking. Is this legal for us to adopt a budget and then later adopt a, adopt the rate given that we're supposed to have 30 days before that tax rate tomorrow gets considered? Now, I show you item section 102.005, proposed tax budget filed with municipal clerk, public inspection. Now, I can't prove the day the mayor did or didn't submit that to whoever was the public clerk or municipal clerk at the time. I can say that starting Wednesday, when I started looking for the budget, it wasn't there. I've got video documentation of that. This law under item C says if the municipality maintains an internet website, the municipal clerk shall take action to ensure that the proposed budget is posted on the website. Now, what the mayor might tell you is, yeah, but it didn't give us a timeframe. It is presumed to be done at the same time it is presented to the municipal clerk who was supposed to submit it at that moment. Now, or as soon as it's practicable. Now, if Phil were here, he would deliberate, and he'd probably side with the mayor because he does that. He votes to the gray area, and he chooses whatever the mayor wants, needs him to choose. And here's the other problem. We have four members, four votes on this five-member board that typically vote the mayor's way. They don't deliberate, they don't ask questions. We haven't seen anybody ask them questions about why the mayor wants to spend a given amount, substituting another amount, suggesting more. We haven't heard any of that. I know my time's about up. I think I get five minutes. But I think I've made my point. As much as we're going to have a budget, and I think 30 days from now, this budget will be adopted, but it should be adopted legally, properly. And I think that this council should hold the mayor to the highest standards, those that came before she became mayor.
We're ready when you are, Cheyenne.
I haven't had a chance to see the budget. I was out of town, I guess, over the weekend. However, the ordinance, or the issue or the reason I wanted to speak is because I hadn't actually seen this ordinance until just, I don't know, 10 minutes ago when I walked in. But it, along with all of the, I went back through, I don't know, the agendas through May, the beginning of May, and every single one is riddled with mistakes. Every single one, whether it's time, no time, no name, no nothing. Then when I sit in the meetings or even listen to meetings, the motions that are made is literally, I'll make a motion. What are we doing? What are we doing here? I mean, we don't know what motions we're making, we're not reading what we're passing, we're not following the law as far as time is constrained, the constraints are concerned. Phil isn't clearly here to answer those questions. We used to utilize him to do these things. And if this is Olson and Olson's work, then we need to be asking ourselves what we're paying them for, because this thing is riddled with mistakes as well. It says you guys have already had this hearing and that you're passing this particular budget that I guess came out on Friday. Thank you, Dan. I didn't know it was out. But that you guys are having, you had a hearing at 6:00 PM tonight, and that you've already discussed all of this, that you've already set those monies in place. I was at a budget workshop myself not too long ago where these guys were, everybody here was, well, with the exception of Angela, obviously, was discussing where we should put money in what categories and where we should take money from different locations. And all of a sudden, that, I guess, got changed over the course of the weekend without the public's knowledge?
No. No, it hasn't been changed.
Oh, I didn't know you were discussing things. But anyway, that's my point of view. Thank you.
That's it, I'm sorry. Okay. One more chance. Anybody who didn't sign up? All right. Any public comments? We'll close the hearing with item 4C. Item five is new business, adoption of the budget and the ordinance. Prior to that, council is going to adjourn to an executive session. So we will adjourn at 6:44. I'm going to read it stated for you. The City Council of the City of Symington, Texas will convene in its closed executive session on the 22nd day of September, 2025, beginning at 6:44 PM. We will go to the office, so you all can stay here. The temperature is not.
Cory, is that on the current agenda, if I can ask? Full system.
It's not on the agenda, but we can go to an executive session at any time.
Mayor, can you slide the code?
All right. Thanks, everybody, for waiting. We're going to resume at 7:49. The City Council of the City of Symington, Texas ended its closed executive session at 7:49 PM on this 22nd day of September, 2025. Item five on our agenda is new business. Item A is for the adoption of the budget ordinance for fiscal year 2025-2026. It reads, "Consider and take action to adopt budget ordinance number 2025-05 for fiscal year 2025-2026." Council, do we have some discussion on the budget?
Yes, ma'am. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right. I laid out and spent 14 or 15 hours this past weekend when you gave us this final one dated 9/17, that everybody should have a copy of. And then the previous one was 9/9 from our workshop. It's still set version one on 9/6. So what I've done is I've gone across, across the whole thing, trying to figure out the final status when you give us the final one. And then now I have some questions. So it has nothing to do with the two revenue rates, it just has to do with computation and consideration for some of the things we had previously talked about. So when you look at, I guess I'll start with the final that came back.
Yeah, that's the one we're working from tonight.
Isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. But you have to have the one previous to understand changes.
It's fine. I'm just making sure I'm using the right reference that you're talking about.
I'm just guessing, but it says the previous.
Go ahead.
When you started.
I'm sure you have questions about.
Ad valorem stayed the same on the last three that you've given us. Fort Ben Cad 8. When you look at on the previous two, it was missing on 9/9. But that's okay. It was, it's on it now, $58,000. Problem I have is going down, and our sales tax that was changed, it's on the current latest one, is 199,000. 000. If you take that 199,000, 000, and you compute the next item, which is 1/4% sales tax for roads, and the sales tax for 4A and 4B, you find that 4A and 4B are incorrect.
Okay, what's, so those are on page?
It's on the front page of the latest one.
Well, the EDCs are not on the home page anymore.
Right.
So it says 0 per CPA recommended, but that is not belong on that income line, since the EDCs stand alone.
Who's the CPA?
Eddie Peacock.
Well, he's our official CPA now?
Yeah, he's been.
Well, he's been correct. All right, Eddie, well, if you want to go, go to EDC 4A, which the guy's here for him. And he has $52,400 for his sales tax.
Right.
Correct figure is $49,750. If you feel free to compute it, Justin, let me know.
Okay, Steve, you're wanting to change EDC, and you get $49,750.
Well, if you change EDC, and then you go to 3.
Isn't that what you said?
Sorry.
Isn't that what you said?
That's what I said. Let's go to 300 then with the same item, which is EDC B. Their total actually goes up by $500. It should be $99,500, which is double the amount for EDC A. That makes both of them come back in balance to the 199 figure that you posted on the item, 14010. Can we get agreement?
Can you tell me the number for EDC B that you worked at?
EDC, I'm sorry, EDC B, if I'm going too fast. EDC B lined out in 300-4012 should be $99,500. It's an increase of 500. And consequently, if you start off with the wrong number, the entire budget for them, it needs to be corrected.
No problem.
To bring it in back.
What else? So then you're saying Fort Ben Cad 8 should be adjusted?
Well, I look at.
Or was that a different line you were talking about? Sales tax was the one. What, sales tax for roads is what you were saying?
Well, if you're going to look, sales tax for roads, that would be 49,750 also. Because it's 1/4%.
Okay.
So the budget you gave us has those two figures wrong based on the amount you said is the sales tax. It's close, but not significant.
Just fine. What else? You go.
So when you take out on our working one, make 0 per CPA at Peacock, the entries that need to be made then for new first transfer to the EDCs still have to be made. So the money comes into one place, and then they have to transfer it to the proper.
That's correct.
200 and 300 numbers, which would be the same, 4013 or 4012.
That's right.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right. When I look at Texas Pride, it's a 40% increase.
Okay, one second. Are you through with the income ones?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so Texas Pride is on.
Any questions?
Should be on page two on expense, right? So the page you're looking at is page two or three?
Everything's going to start with, okay, last thing you hand it out, and then I'll go back.
That's what I'm saying. Are you through with income page?
No, I'm not.
Page one?
No, I'm not.
Okay. So what line are you looking at?
Right, so now.
Other franchise for 100-4034?
Okay, 100-4034 went from $5,000 to $7,000.
Mm-hmm.
That's a 40% increase. Does that seem logical that they're going to?
That's based on what we've earned this year.
Okay, so you adjusted it based on what you actually earned? Sounds good. Any increase in revenue is always good. So EDC insurance fees has $700 for board insurance, and if their total is separate from us, why would that be here?
Because we'll pay, it will be a part of the city's policy, so the city will pay for that, so they'll contribute that to the city, and the city will hold the policy.
So they're establishing a policy with us?
We have an insurance policy, and the EDCs, each of their boards has a certain coverage, the board members. So this is reflective of the budget expenditure that they have in their budget, and they're going to give that to the city. The city's going to pay for the policy. So in each of the EDCs, you'll see $350 each board, I think is what they budgeted on the subsequent pages, 3 and 4.
So would the lineup not be equal to 40404, or would it be a different kind of lineup? Because I see insurance 350, that's what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. Good. The admin fees coming in. It shows administrative fees in. I understand that to be split between 200 and 300.
Right.
And that 200 is going to contribute $1,100, and 300 is going to contribute $2,500. Is that correct? So you look at 210?
I'm just flipping pages to see. I'm sure your numbers are right, but let's see.
So EDC 4A does have 1,100 on it, and just make sure.
Yeah, but it says agendas, minutes, and finance on page one of two of EDC A under 200-10-5240, and then EDC B.
It's on, it's on, I guess, up more. Saying it's good that they're coming back with administrative fees, but that also requires a transfer that needs to be in fund view to those two numbers. Just main reason to announce it is that it's enough complications sometimes with fund view already with having the right entries in. So by this just being documented, Stacy or whoever can make sure it gets in for the budget.
That's right. Yep. And that's why we're using fund account, so that stuff is broken down as far as we can possibly get it to make it clear.
So the next one, move on. We have EDC audit fee. And EDC audit fees put at 2,000 for us on our budget, but it's actually 200 from, 200 from, I'm sorry, it's an amount from 210-5252, $1,000. Of $1,000. So those, again, are transfers that have to go across to the right numbers. But why? If you totally said EDC's totally separate, paid at the CPA, why wouldn't everything be totally separate and not have to come after us? Because I understand they can have.
Cost savings.
Cost savings.
Generally, cost savings. You're paying your consultant to do your administrative work, you're paying him by the hour. It's less expensive to have copies made, agendas done, minutes done, all the administrative stuff done by the city. So we, I don't even know for how many years, but what? Many years the city has done that function for them, same thing with the insurance, providing the insurance policy. If they, if we insure separately, it's possible.
Okay.
And there may be some technicalities about the municipality being the holder. I don't know all the details about that here, but we can certainly, if you want to learn more about it.
No, I think your answer's sufficient. It's just the, when should an EDC carry their own contract, their counter scenario versus the city? Where are they only sole person gaining the value of it? Then they should carry the contract. Correct?
I think it's a, historically for Symington, it's been about scale. When EDC get the size of, I don't know what. Fulcher, for example, they've got to do all of their own because of the size and the amount of projects you work. If the size of the activity of the EDC is more than we can handle through the city administrative services, probably that should be a discussion we had.
Next, we're going to go down to grant revenue. So grant revenue, I understood you were happy about getting a check. Did we get a check?
No.
On the first page?
That's not really how it works. So we submit a payment request for the first milestone of work? Yes, we did receive payment for that, and yes, we turned it around and sent it right back out. So we don't hold that money at all. We've had some previous grants where they give us the entire amount, and then you pay the bill, let it go. That is not how this is structured.
So how can we realize a million five when you don't have the money? We're saying we're going to maybe get the money.
It will come in during the fiscal year and go out, so it's, the budget is coming in and going out.
So you're totally believing that in the next fiscal year, by next, what is that, next September 30th, we're going to have a million five go through this place?
You could. It's probably not likely that it'll all get completed, like we can carry it, encumber it for the next year.
So the reason why I don't is because of where we are today and the fact that Langford hasn't come back in to answer the questions that I've had, you know, during that time. But they should come back in and say, where's our plan? Here's our calendar. Here's what we're going to have, our PLO, our QL. Here's what we expect it to charge you, or be able to file for monies along the way, the 900,000, the 500,000.
We have that.
How is that going to work?
We have that. It's in the agreement.
There's no calendar.
It's already been approved by council.
It's steps, it's not.
Yes, it is.
It's not a calendar.
And there's some date targets.
But it's not a calendar. So if I wanted to match their calendar.
So yes, now, whether they come back in is kind of off-topic for the budget.
Well, it's a big budget.
And I've agreed that we could have them come on the, on the.
Yeah, 21st. I think you and I planned to talk before it, but it's going to be October 21st if we're best, for them to come out.
If they're available, that day. We have a good firm of the date, but we haven't had the pencil account.
So I just don't understand how we could have 1.5 million in this column and say we have a $3 million budget when, normally I'm used to, you cannot post revenue till you get it. This is a budget.
Well, we're not, we won't have the headlamp until we're going to get it, until we receive it next year either.
Well, the thing, there's a difference about ad valorem is we have, we have a place to put our foot on. We have 27 cents, 28 cents, and a capital amount that we're going to match it to, and there's a number. And so that's totally different than just saying, oh, how about 500,000?
So if we left it off, then where's the accounting for it?
Good question.
Because then they're going to come in, money's going to go out.
No, no, actually, you have a whole section, and it's called grants. How does that work? How do we, how do we do it, how do we count it on?
So you see on that, is it the last page here?
It's page one of one, it's unfortunately one of one. Second to last page, grants.
Right. And you see that it's set up, that that only reflects the, we'll get to it. That only reflects the expense. So it's not set up completely as a standalone like an EDC is, and that's why you have to reflect it on the revenue side as well. So if we, I mean, if we don't put it in our budget because it's not really money that we're going to hold, we still have to account for it.
I see.
So that's why it's in the budget as both income and outflow.
So how does this work? Maybe it's a question for Stacy, for fund view. How does this work? So you got a check, right? And it's, it'd be prepaid that amount because you asked for that in one of the meetings of the first tranche had been done, and we're going to submit.
Right.
And you got a check.
Right, so Langford wrote the invoice, wrote the bill, it happened to be paid to them the first one. They wrote an invoice, and put all the appropriate documents that are required to go with it as part of the grant process, submitted to us. We signed it, turned it in to the GLO, the General Land Office. Once they've gone through their process and they approve it, then they deposit the amount of money for that invoice in our bank account. And then we have a specific number of days that you have to turn that money around and pay it to the invoice. So it'll, there'll be an invoice, it'll come to us, and we'll pay it right out. We won't be holding any of it.
Yeah, I thought it was structured here to like three days, and so you have to turn it around.
Three or five, something like that.
All right. So I understand that, but just didn't understand why we have to have a separate 400 for grants. And there's, we only got one grant going, right?
You can't, you cannot mix grant monies coming into the city with your operating budget. That is a huge no-no. They don't mix. You don't put grant money into your operating account. It's a separate account. That's where the money goes. That's where the grant people deposit money, and then when we have to pay it, we transfer it out of the grant account into our operating budget.
I understand the process, Stacy. What I'm asking is, you're putting a credit on our column to say we have 2.8 million in this revenue, and then you're putting a grant, credit account? I'm looking at it on the right, not on the left. My first, that's going to be a debit column that you can put in fund view to zero it out. So it does not affect the budget?
No, it's, it's, money's coming in and going out at the same time. It's a place for.
I understand the process. I'm trying to understand the numbers, why they're, that they're in here, how they work.
Because you have to have it on the left and the right. You have to have it coming in, and you have to have it going out. Otherwise, your balance doesn't, your budget doesn't balance.
So is 400 included overall in our budget?
Department 400?
Yeah. Well, item 400-4300. Is it in our budget?
Yeah, it's a department. That's a fund.
So if it's in the department budget, and on 25-26, it says a working amount of $1,005,000. And on our revenue budget, on the working side, we have the same figure, right? They're both purely on the revenue side. Why is 400 at the, why is 400 at the opposite?
Because that's expenses.
Doesn't say. It just says 400. I know we're down there. Totally expenses, 102, doesn't include.
expenses.
The page right before, sorry. You go to 300, then you go to 200, then you go back to 100. And we have 2.8 there that is the, to me, has a 1.2. Tell you what, I'll, I'll move in and take this item and have a separate discussion on how fund view is going to handle this money. I have a problem with the money set, but we know we're supposed to get it. I do have a problem thinking we're going to get it within the fiscal year. Then, like you said, you can always carry it over, and it may be not totally any clarification as to the. as to then in the budget, because that's what you're gonna have. Yeah, you understand?
I don't understand the part that you're asking for the next year's budget of when things are gonna happen, but we'll have an update by then that should probably clarify what's remaining to be done. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, what we're about to do, 25, 26. And if we don't finish this thing, it'll be 26, 27.
That's right. So you encumber whatever is left.
I like that word. I like that word. But we don't encumber the, the GLO because it's not money that's in our hands until it comes into...
We wouldn't encumber it in the budget because you wanna keep the placeholder, like we still have $600,000 of their, of this grant money, so you would put that in the next budget just exactly the same way.
And only for the purposes explicitly for that budget and that item.
Right, for that grant.
And that is right.
Very specific to that.
All right, next item. We have liability insurance and health insurance. We could take them both at the same time. So health insurance went nine to 17,000 and plus 14,000. Is that planning for two people maybe?
Liability insurance is based on what we spent this year. That's not fully specific.
Okay.
But the health insurance is.
All right, if you flip the page. Technology. So I looked at technology, and it's quite a long list on it, as far as what's involved in it. I actually don't like it clustered like this, but so be it. I understand by accident, by the way, I'm gonna tell you, I did not ask for Express to send me that data that they sent me. The way he sent me was the fact that it's, uh, two things. One is that it's done, they're expired on September 30th, so we need a new contract or agreement with Express, within Press. Don't know what their price is gonna be, that's probably something that's to be negotiated.
It's included, because they gave us long notice about that, I think. So the price that's listed here is our expectation of what that new renewal is.
Okay, and of course, there's the archive social. Archive social here is, you have it as the 8,188 because you stated that it expired and has to be told to be redone?
Yes.
Doesn't archive social also include another piece of code that we get from them?
We can't, we, the previous council canceled that. It was called Granicus, and it was for doing agendas and meeting minutes.
Well, there was something called Plus.
Archive Social's name of the software, they purchased that.
I understand.
And the name of it has changed, and it may be something Plus, and I keep using an old name for it called Archive Social, so I'd have to look.
Civic Plus is the name.
Well, there's, there's...
Civic Plus is...
That's what I'm saying, there's a $687 payment made in August the 5th or something to them, Civic Plus. Now, is that a different piece of software, or is that the payment that was on...
It was a payment that was never made to be of them.
Well, is, we owed them 687 for what?
Yes. It was an invoice, it was an old invoice that was never processed, and part of what I've been trying to do is to get everything caught up before the end of the year.
So if we had an invoice, then we were paying for an expired piece of software?
It was a past due invoice.
I understand it was a past due invoice, but what was it paying for?
It was previous contract. When we had it, for it was accidentally canceled, and the bills were never paid. This is one of the things that Stacy's been working on to get us all up to date.
I guess there's some more detail to it than that, right? As to how it got canceled or when it got canceled. Why it's gonna cost us so much? Well, is this a budget?
So how about, we gotta stay on the budget.
It is a budget discussion, and the item is on the budget. Thank you. All right, so I have no other questions on those, those pieces of software. I made my comment about, I guess, working on redoing the Impress contract based on what you gave me. Next one going down is payroll. I'm assuming now that the payroll increase of 96,000 is for, you're gonna go for the administrator? Talk more about that later. And payroll tax expenses, four times what it was, and four times what it was, but we're only adding one person. So is it based on the fact that we're gonna pay that much more for someone? Just four times?
Potentially, four times, you're right about that.
So the first thing...
Fiona's advice is that she, when we were talking about this and writing it originally, is that she felt like it was underbudgeted, and we have had some past due, some bills for 22 that came in that weren't paid.
IRS.
In the payroll tax. So it's been caught up, but it's probably airing on the side of caution.
Nothing on what airing on the side of caution?
Yeah.
Because the previous column had it at only 10%, and I thought payroll tax expenses at 10% is pretty low. Okay. TMRS, I guess we're gonna, we're calculating into TMRS from 18 to 29, the fact that we're gonna pay both sides, one side.
We're gonna pay, pardon me, matching dollar per dollar up to 7%.
Up to what?
7%. And that would be a second, including a second employee in TMRS.
Got it. And accrual district went from 1,400 to 3,000. Did they give us a notice or something about that kind of an increase?
Just based on the collections for this year. Sometimes, you know, they pay, and then they pay us, we pay them, we get a bill to go back this year that's, this settled at the $3,000 mark. So writing the budget based on what actually went out or was expected is where that number comes from.
Okay. And Peacock, not gonna make as much money this next year, is he?
They're not. That is big gold.
Could it be because we're not doing four Augusts?
Well, we were only doing one August last year, so that's only fair, but they've done a whole lot of work this year that hopefully will be caught up and more streamlined, so we won't have to have nearly as much of their time.
So you gave me their contract. Thank you for that, my mailers that I asked for, and it expired 3/31 of 2025, March of 2025. So are we on a month-by-month basis with them now?
I need to look at that error, because I thought we renewed with them already. No change in price, but I thought we signed our invoice, so I'll have to take it out of balance.
If we do, just, I just, I'll just give you about the one you gave me.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and consulting went down? I don't know, I guess Stacy's...
Again, we did that based on the actual fees from LJA for, essentially, permits and their regular...
Well, this consulting is LJA. Well, what is, where would you put Stacy?
Could be there as well.
Well, you think it's in that figure? Okay, so...
I mean, I could be wrong here, if you wanna make it different, make it bigger, because we're growing. I would just use what we've expensed and what we know's coming as the basis for those numbers.
Well, the only reason I say that is you signed the contract, Stacy, and you have an amount in there for per hour, and then you have some idea of how many hours you're gonna use, and that's your budget for her. And then LJA, you stated that we're gonna use them less in the next fiscal year?
I would say about equal. We budgeted 40, but we didn't spend it, so I reduced the amount based on what we actually spent. We budgeted 40,000 last year. We didn't use that for standard permitting and, and their everyday work, so...
And the monies we paid them for the hardware project are totally separate now in this figure.
I don't want to confuse the issue, but to add just a piece of information, that when we do the zoning project, it will be very heavily weighted toward engineering, but the money for that is in the zoning project to keep it kind of separate from our everyday use of LJA and the project. Just FYI.
This could be another counting nightmare, I think. Travel and training. Travel and training, you left, you actually brought it down to 500. I asked you to add more. I think, because I'm going to the TML conference, I think every member on city council should have some kind of training every year. There's training out there with TML, some of it's online, some of it, whatever, right? But we all need training, we're gonna be better council members. So I would ask that that 6,000 become 10,000. That's 2,000 for them. And if they have to go out, they're gonna spend 2,000. If they stay in, it might not. Any comments on that from other members?
Where are you taking the 4,000 from?
Excuse me?
Where are you taking the 4,000 from?
I'm just saying move this to 10. I don't have to balance the budget, that's something we all have to do.
Come on, Eric.
Right?
So we already...
You're gonna take it from somewhere, okay?
We already have a budget that is $1,000 a person for council. Without a plan of there is a particular trip or a particular training. I don't mind to change it if that's what the consensus is. Typically, we would wanna have, I, I would try to create, this is what we think it's gonna cost, two people are gonna go to TML, everybody's gonna go to TML, somebody's going to the social conference, social media conferences, whatever that is. But, I mean, we can turn up for 4,000 as we go and take it from somewhere else and put it there. That's what y'all wanna do.
I wouldn't let this one item stop us from getting the budget done. I'm just saying, council should consider the fact that we need training.
Okay. 100 dash 10 dash 5262. Make it a note.
Then you have, you have a line item called contracts, but we have nothing there. We have contracts. So what's the difference between 110, 5264 contracts and accounting for monies anywhere else for, whether it's software contract, hardware contract, or any other contracts that we now label maybe technology, but they're contracts? And the only reason, the only reason that concerns me is that I don't think we have a good handle on contracts that may expire.
So the budgeting, why not a contract? I mean, you could put anything that you want. We haven't used it for that, so I'm trying to keep things where they've been for continuity. Doesn't mean we can't change it in the future to a different bucket.
Any comments from anybody else on contracts? None? Okay, we'll move on. The 2,500 for miscellaneous, I have no problem that it's 2,500. Who accesses that and how do we use it? Is that something the mayor uses, or it's just miscellaneous?
I mean, it would be for, this is an administrative budget, if you will, and so that would be the wellhead on the water well needed repair this year, or some, the year that we had Janie as a contracted employee, we didn't budget for that because we didn't know she was coming, and we used miscellaneous when we needed to get some household items for her to live in the apartment, or random things that we don't know what that is, so we would access that by just agreeing. It'd be, typically, it's been the administrator, which doesn't make, it doesn't belong anywhere else properly, so this would be the right place for it.
So it's not, doesn't belong in my contingency, we could just take money for, for contingency and things like that?
I don't know why you couldn't, if you wanted to change the...
Well, I, I think contingency as like it's free form. Contingency is something's gonna happen, we didn't plan, and we're gonna put some money, maybe 5%, whatever there, and we're free to use it, which is blue it out of contingency.
It's not a term that's in FundU often, isn't it? Contingency?
No, it's just a terminology. You don't have a contingency line item per se that I know of.
I think it's just terminology difference.
Well, I'm looking at 210 dash 5530, contingency, $77,000.
200.
And there is a country in FundU?
That's the EDC.
Well, I don't care, it's 210, it's in it. TML ledger codes.
Right. That, I think that's 77,000, or wasn't that...
Well, I'm not asking about 77,000, Stacy, I'm just making the point that there is an item called contingency.
Okay.
And if it's a, if there's a 210, 5530, there has to be a 110, 5530. If we don't have it, it's not in here, I'm just saying, there has to be one.
So is your, your issue about it that we should change from miscellaneous to contingency?
I think it just is more free, to be honest. Contingency.
Okay, how about we look up miscellaneous versus contingency?
That's fine.
Accounting practices.
Okay.
Okay, what else?
All right. The next two we zero out, again, the same thing, 24013 and 342, those figures that need to be transferred over 49,000, 750, and 99,500, but it's coming off of this, 200 zero on this page. All right. Then I made a comment, or previously, and so going down, I'm sorry, going down to emergency management, which starts with 10, 20, 50, 22. And on emergency management, incident response, high water deployment, $35,000. I made a comment and for that, emergency management, every year, 30,000, 30,000, it should be encumbered, and if by being encumbered, you would have 30, 60, 90, 100, 20, on and on and on, at some point in time, you go, I don't think I have to budget for the next 30, we have enough if something bad happens, right? I made that comment, Justin, did you remember?
No, I'm ready.
Okay. And so my comment now is that we put, we went from 30 to 35,000, and I would, I would just say that if that's a contract, is it a contract? So then they're putting those pumps in on time?
Yes.
So it's a contract? Okay, so you actually have a contract with somebody, and you have an end contract, which we all ought to understand because emergency management includes all of us, right? You on top, him, and then the rest of us. The contract dates, when they expire would be important, the cost to hold, the whole versus cost to deploy. Okay, good.
Zero cost to hold it. It only costs us something if we deploy.
Okay, so that's, that's more the reason to encumber what we tax the people for, to just give it.
Well, I hear you, and I heard, and I took notes when you recommended that before, but the rest of council didn't agree, so I didn't make a change to the budget for the encumbrance on that.
That's correct. I don't remember them not agreeing.
Well, it wasn't a vote, but the consensus was they didn't...
Okay. Council did not agree to encumber.
Didn't ask for it, that.
So then I would just say to council, you are agreeing to charge people every year for something that you may not need.
I think what we talked about, Eric, was at that time, and correct me, council, if you have other comments about it, was that over time, we spend the money, we've spent it twice in the last couple of years, two years in a row is our call. The years that we don't spend it, then it goes, it stays with emergency management, or stays in our reserves, so that when we have a larger event or an event that takes two weeks for deployment, because we pay by the week, so we've gone from 32, 35 to 70. And if we have any additional, like the 2016s and the 2017s, that was really catastrophic, it costs us a little bit more, that there's reserves there for it. So I think that that was why council didn't opt for encumbering year after year. At this time, it could be at another time if you guys decide to do that.
So where are the reserves held for them? Where's the 30,000?
Reserves are in the council, you got it in the quarterly report.
There's nothing...
It's not held separately, but it's held in reserves, where money goes to reserves, it's not set that year.
So if you remember, when we had our last meeting, I gave you a colored sheet that shows, right now I can't find it.
It's okay. We remember.
And it's still encumbered amount in purple lines, and there was nothing that related back to EDC as encumbered. So if you got all of the money for EDCA...
It's emergency, EDCs are held separately. I think you're talking about emergency, right?
I'm saying if EDC and New Forest has their own CDRs, ICS, everything else, right? It's their money, 300 and something thousand dollars, 500 and something thousand for her. And within that, there's nothing that says it's encumbered, there's nothing that says anything, it's just thrown into CD. It's just thrown into CDs and then you might be able to come back and get it from them. So he wouldn't come to the city and say, oh, got an emergency, let's go get the 35,000 back. Well, it should already be in the EDC money in New Forest.
The EDCs are already segregated. I think you're talking about emergency management.
I am talking. I am talking about emergency management right now, yes.
Emergency management doesn't have anything here that you say here.
All right. So where is the encumbered money for emergency management?
It's not encumbered. It's not encumbered.
Should it be?
Possibly. The council decides to do that. But the point is that the council did not say we want to encumber.
You answered me. They don't agree. Leave it alone. All right. Leave it alone. I just don't agree to tax everybody every year for something.
Well, if we have, if we have a flood, I think the citizens would be a little upset if we don't have any money to take care of.
You know, I would be upset too, Andy. But that's not the case at all. You have money. You have money. You have $300,000 if we have a flood.
And reserves, and then we zero out our reserves, and then we have no money. And then we got to tax the citizens beyond the.
You cover the.
Yeah. For $35,000, hey man, let's keep it in there.
Till when? Every million?
Every year. Until we don't flood again, until the good Lord says, no, we're done with Simon.
We don't need to argue it anymore with the point I made.
I don't know. You're one arguing, we all want it in there. You, except you.
What do you mean you want it in here?
I want it in there.
All right. You told the people what you want.
All right, can we move on to the next?
Yep. Next one is.
Question?
Next one is going to 1020-5320. Equipment, and I think this equipment is for the audio visual here and chambers. And that.
No, it's not that one.
Which one is it?
It's down at 140-5319 is where it is. It's about three quarters of way down the.
I got 5319 is building improvements and it's ARPA balance this October. And then you added on in the comments on the right side.
ARPA balance is left over.
Well, I understood building improvements to be the ARPA. Was the ARPA.
The ARPA is complete, so this is moved on to the next year.
So the ARPA did not have 21,000 and something left over?
No.
That's what we reported?
No.
So ARPA is at zero, is what you're telling me?
ARPA is not closed out yet. And I think what I said before is I think there's about $3,000 or $4,000 that wasn't spent. And that money will go back to, according to council's directions, that money should go back to EDCA if it's unspent, because they funded it, the $77,000 that was for additional work to be done at the same time as ARPA. Same time as the grant project.
So that answers the 77,000 problem that I had too. Okay. All right, so we'll go to 5319 and 10,500 is encumbered? Where?
Encumbered in that same line, because city council approved that previously. A previous council budgeted that 10.5 last year for the audio visual for this room.
And it wasn't used.
Wasn't used. So carry it forward, that's what, so it's encumbered. And then the recommendation that I had on that line we discussed in the workshop was to add another 10.5, because the quotes that we have are 20 and $30,000 so far. So I thought that I had a note on here, and when I printed it, it's not there, but so that council could consider it. ECB also budgeted 7,801.
Yes.
And EDCA budgeted 3,040.
Yes.
For a total of 10,841. So if this line item was unchanged, that would budget just over $30,000 available to do technology in this room.
Correct.
If council were to decide to not do that additional 10.5 this year and put it somewhere else, you would still have 10,000 that was encumbered plus the 10,000 that's been offered up by the EDCs.
I did make a note on the 200 and 300, given us the 3, 3,000 and 7,000. I think I just had it in the wrong place. I had it on 5320 instead of, you were saying it needs to be in 5319. That's mine. Going down to facilities and capital improvement, which I think is the ARPA, right? It's blank, 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 cross. What is 5275?
On 130?
I'm sorry, 140, 5275.
There's not any, I mean, there's not any budgeted there. So what if?
I thought it was the ARPA contract that I do not see as zero.
Yeah, we don't have ARPA in this budget because it's completed.
Yeah, we don't have any capital projects for this year, so there won't be anything motioned.
So the next thing to add a comment on is internet and nitid Drake that we had of our experience today. Of everything down. And it's City Hall Fiber, and City Hall Fiber is provided by ATT. Down. T-Mobile, down. Hotspots, down. Do we have anything?
The T-Mobile hotspots were the best option. They were working today. It was slow, but they were working the majority of the day.
What T-Mobile does is they go to 4G and 5G when they're having problems, because they can get 4G to work. It's just the level. So that's why they were operating very, very slow. My home didn't work, in fact, it broke the price of the lease. Okay, so we have 11,000. Is that 11,000 in consideration of doing anything different?
No.
So maybe we should put something in there?
We could do that, we just have to take it from somewhere else.
So any comments?
So maybe that's a budget adjustment that we would take once we know what, where, identify what that is and how much it might cost.
And then move it somewhere else, like contingency. That's a joke. All right. I'm just saying, do we have any theory that I go learn right now? No, I appreciate that.
Okay, I know you said you had about 10 or 11 lines that you had questions about.
Sorry. I got to give them to you. You want to shut me up?
No, I just thought maybe you were hit to the end of your list.
I'm hoping to. Shouldn't take too much more. I'm just questioning, trying to make sure that we have the adequate money for the adequate reasons. Can we ask why we could go over this in the first?
Yeah, just tell me what the next line is, I'll be happy to.
So maintenance and repair of the generator, I was just thinking, I have a generator. A lot of people have generators now. $1,600 is, if you, your generator has issues with electronics, that's not enough money. I don't know, but our generator is. I don't know how many kilowatts you have back there, and I don't know what fuel it runs on. So I'm bringing it up only because emergency management are, somebody should know. And could comment on that right now.
So it's propane. And it runs on a big tank that's right there on the side of the building. It's the only thing that we use propane for. And the $1,600 is, we have a maintenance contract. And the contractor comes out twice a year and does all the maintenance and repair.
Does it cover if you have to fix something like electronics in there? Does it automatically switch over?
Yes.
Okay. So it's yours. And what's the kill line? Sufficient to run the whole place plus air conditioning?
Yes.
Is it sufficient to run everything we've added on?
Yes.
I'd like two yeses.
I'll take it.
Okay. Equipment replacement, would that be inclusive of laptops?
Now, this category, Stacy, what's the category?
5318.
And the 40? 40 is facilities, right? So equipment replacement. I thought I put that note there, but I think that it includes.
140, GL codes, 140, 5318.
I think that I, I think that I included the quote that we got for the mini split.
Oh, yeah, 4,000. That was 4,000.
Yeah. Yes, a 38,000.
I'm behind you.
Which leaves $5,000 for something to age for your place that's got over here.
I love to do my own.
And we talked about 5319 already, which is the encumbered amounts. So the next section is going to be in public works, I'm going to flip the page. So public works, page four at the top, is the planning and zoning. It says it's going to use encumbered money and funds from this year in 2024. And is that money in a CR somewhere?
Yes.
So.
Probably yes. I mean, it's not specifically segregated, but if we're not using it, we're earning the most interest that we can.
So when it comes time to start paying, is it your intention that you would cash in a CD to pay for it?
Depends if it's the right financial, the best financial. If we have money in operating.
Yes, we will.
That's available, we spend that first because it's not making the same amount of interest.
We got the funds in operating, so.
We do. So that's what I'm saying. We would take it from where we're earning the least amount of money for us at the time of the project.
So.
In the short version of that.
So it's really not reserved, it's just in our budget, in our pot of money. We're saying.
It's in your pot of money, but you have to keep record of, yeah, this belongs to this and this belonged to that, and that's why you can put all these things in the budget.
Right. I agree with you said, you have to keep a record of it. And I guess I have trouble when I look at the first statement saying, what do we keep in the record of? We don't keep records.
The records are in FundView. The money is in New Forest. That gives you the high level.
So.
New Forest doesn't track in each of our projects.
I understand.
We didn't do separate accounts, because you see how many we already have. So it's up to us to make sure that FundView has all the detail that we can muster and tracks every project.
So if we ask for all encumbered amounts from FundView, we could get it?
You can understand it, but like, that's not encumbered.
Wait.
Encumbered is specific to the budget.
I understand that. But if I want to say in my budget, show me all monies that are encumbered. It's in the GL codes, it's in there saying what it is. Can we pull it out?
Yeah, but if there's not an individual GL code just for encumbered money, it would just be a bigger dollar amount where that money is coming from.
Well, this one is, 100%.
Well, the GL code does not say that it's.
I understand, it says planning and zoning.
Right, so.
We're saying it's encumbered. You can't use nothing else, keep that 155 because it's.
Right.
And you're going to be moving this money to whoever's doing it? Maybe an EDC or whatever, you're going to be moving stuff around, right? However, the same thing leaves out.
Well, you get an invoice, and you pay the invoice, and you make sure that you enter line of the. Go ahead, Stacy. You charge the right line item with the invoice. So if this invoice needs to be, if the planning and zoning invoice needs to be charged to 150, 5274, that's where we go.
Okay.
So that's where I'm saying the documentation lives in FundView.
All right. The thing near and dear to everybody, and that everybody talks about, and we keep talking about, talking about, talking about roads, road repair major. And in this line item, we now have the GLO mid-mod street repair, encumbered, 916,000, which we don't have in our hand, but we're going to have to magically move the money around. And then 229,000 encumbered from, well, I'm sorry, 900,000 was for 2024, the 200 from 2025, earned $42,000. That was the 229 that is, was already in our budget, that's earning.
Right, it's encumbered from the city council of previous year.
Okay. Good for them. And.
It hasn't been spent because service hasn't been available.
And we talked in, we talked about taking money from textbooks. So this is, in my mind, first time we've actually taken money from what could be termed reserve money that's been invested. Taking money out of textbook, we're not going to earn any more interest from it. We're going to take 53,000 and use it at some point.
Right, that was the discussion in the budget workshop.
Right. I agree. Okay.
So city council is in essence spending $300,000, fast and present decisions above the grant to get road work done for major repair in that line item. And then you guys, at this point, this draft is that instead of budgeting $5,000 for minor repair, we also budget $25,000 for that, so that some additional roads that can't be completely rebuilt right now could get addressed, at least with a shorter term fix.
So I understand, when we talked before, that patchy mine holes stuff is pretty quick. You call them, they get out there, they patch the holes that we asked for, right? But the other stuff is a drawn out process. And right now, we have hopes that next spring, you can get three roads done off of this money. And definitely the rest of it has to come along.
Plus the GLO.
We thinking that GLO is going to happen next spring?
They're going to prioritize it for us because it's a grant, and they made an agreement with us and the GLO as part of this grant.
So Fort Bend?
Fort Bend County Road Bridge.
That sounds good.
The other work, I think we discussed, will either be, if they can fit us in, Fort Bend County Road Bridge is the most economical way to go, and that's how the council wants to spend the money. And if we can, then we're going to bid it out through a contractor recommended by the county, and that's already been through the bid process, and see how much work can get done for the money we have available.
That was a discussion. Wait, what one bid? On that bid? You said the bid?
It'll depend. It'll just depend on the size of it and the requirements. But if you use companies that have already been through the process, the bid process with the county, sometimes you don't have to go out for a separate part.
Like Yellowstone.
Right, just like Yellowstone.
So while we don't have the actual dates from the January, the hope is we coupled in with what we're going to contribute and how it's done next spring. That's the hope.
Spring or summer, yeah.
Okay. And do we know what roads are going to be done off the 900,000? We do. I don't think I've ever heard that one. Share that there.
There is a grant. Yes. By the way, there's a grant spanking new tab on the webpage.
Oh, we added one.
Information is being added there every day.
Good job. I already did it. I'll look for that one. Okay, thank you for that. Okay. So on the road maintenance, that's taken care of, that's going to be fellow councilmen down there. Only question I have on that is whether we could get a second bid from like Davy Tree or somebody else just to check, double check, guys.
On the road bridge?
No, on tree, tree, tree. Section 2, I'm sorry, did I say that wrong there? Miscellaneous road maintenance, tree trimming of overhanging limbs evaluated by section 2 and 3, 16,000, ash and nails, Sanders, 5,000, 911, presented by 22536. And I think we said that Andy would work on that with them, and all I'm saying is.
So this is based on the bid that came from Yellowstone? Or, and Andy provided the maps for sections 2 and 3 in Baton Rouge? They bid it out specific to that? If the council decides to get a second bid, that's perfectly fine. We're just using the bid that we have as the basis for the budget.
I'm not asking for a second bid, I'm just saying it's an Andy's. All right. And so the only thing I couldn't find, and I don't know if it belongs in here or where it belongs, is when you go through the GL codes and all, there's a code for KSB 160 dot XXXX. It's not on these pages.
KSB also is standalone. So look after grants. They submitted a balanced budget with an estimated income of $5,750 and expenses of the same.
So they also received interest of $1,600. So they also received interest of one thousand six hundred thirteen dollars and seventy cents from the CDRs. And they have an operating balance over there of seven thousand three hundred twenty-six fifty-eight. Should that not be listed here?
We could see if interest needs to be added to this.
Well, that line item says interest CDRs, five hundred forty-six eighteen. And if we looked on the report that we had, pulled up the sixteen thirteen seventy as of, and that was, I guess, due. And you show them evidence, operating of seven thousand three twenty-six.
Okay, so they. We should definitely add interest, I'm sure they will be thrilled to use it. So I'll make a note to add a applicable interest to, as an income line, five hundred dash forty-six eighteen, we're going to call it sixteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, and if you really want.
So if the committee spends that money, then of course the interest will be less, but.
No, that's what I'm saying, though, Laurie, is that's just for one quarter. So we need to look.
Now, it's here, dates.
If you look back, I don't know, I have a letter for left in some cases. But the one, the one we had, the one you gave us, died, ended up polarizing. I don't want to talk anymore.
That's a balance, not interest necessarily. On that operating account, sometimes beautiful.
Is the change figure?
Yeah, that's not necessarily just interest. I mean, they're not going to earn sixteen hundred dollars interest on a five thousand dollar account.
Right, I would agree.
That was just that they had a sponsorship, I think, came in. This was for first quarters, so it would have been earnings that they took in at the spring roundup. Or related to the spring roundup.
Okay, that's for, I guess, Kelly to check out. All right, so if you go back, we're on page, I guess it's one of two, but it's two hundred from EDC adjustments, and that's where I said forty-nine seven fifty, yes, a change at the top. And we talked about the audit fields contribution, and audiovisual and chambers that they're going to contribute to, I guess. There needs to be a, if you're going to contribute, it needs to be a transfer or some kind of thing, maybe in the fund view.
Yes.
Okay, and I don't know if that brings it to zero act or not, I don't know. The consulting budget went way high, five thousand seven hundred to eighteen thousand, and I guess you're planning on paying for some of the zoning consulting or something?
That does need to, that's, that's the intent.
I think we talked about that they have some related projects, supportive projects in mind to go with zoning.
So website and advertising. So website, I thought you had taken it to zero for AB for the chambers today, I don't know. Where'd you get, it's still just the website that you're paying fifteen hundred dollars for? Website.
That's the.
It could be enhancements to the city website, expansion of the EDC's presence on the site.
So it's city website, EDC section.
Then that's sort of like EDC section.
Just a contribution to the city? All right, just the question is, is I looked at it, I'm, I'm going to be able to have a website off the ground.
No, no, it's my.
It's our city.
And advertising and marketing, three thousand. I know we talked about some of this not before, but the main, main change I wanted to catch Justin was the fact that your starting figure of sales taxes incorrect.
These are your originals. What's next, Mr. Eric?
Thank you. This is Bootgill. Three hundred dash forty-twelve on, we're on three hundred now, same thing, so the getting amount, the getting amount is ninety-nine thousand five hundred instead of ninety-nine. And then on administrative services and accounting and auditing, those are going to be transfers also, right? To one hundred?
Yep.
Okay, probably should be noted on there. Because they also have seventy-eight-one, which we know is not that they're curturing. And they also have thirty thousand for consulting, so is that going to be their portion of something coming towards zoning or something?
So we talked about that they have been working on some information and some planning that they're going to put together projects that will complement the zoning project and bring it to council.
Okay.
I guess I should have shut up and let you say that for yourself, man. You're good. Sorry.
Good. Thanks for that. You flipped the page because that's all. And then on four, what we talked about is the grants and the transfers, and then on five hundred, the interest on the CDRs, what I just talked about, so finish with that. And believe it or not, that's it.
Thank you.
Did you say something, Steve?
Just like.
Just what?
All right, so. Your recommendation, Eric, or your corrections are for the income on the sales tax, quarter percent for roads, to increase from forty-two thousand to forty-nine seven fifty.
Yes.
So we got seven thousand seven hundred fifty.
Forty eleven. Right.
Additional income. Awesome. So the additional income, since that line item is sales tax for roads, seems like it would make sense to put that on the expense line item for roads, because if you remember, the encumbered line item carried the forty-two thousand dollars, that was the estimate for this year, for the twenty twenty-five.
Yes.
Earned.
Yep.
So we would increase, so to make that balance, if you're going to add income over here, then we would add that seven thousand seven hundred fifty dollars to the one million two eighty-three nine one three, so that would revise the balance there, and now you've got it on the income and the expense.
Correct. Seven thousand.
All right, did any other council members have questions or line item changes for the budget? All right, so we will know then, the EDC EDC A, if this budget was adopted the way it is, EDC A would then ratify or amend a budget after that would meet the change in the sales tax revenue. EDC B would do the same, if the revenue increased from ninety-nine thousand to ninety-nine five. Just procedurally, we handle this as a a budget adjustment after. Okay.
I have one more, just one more.
Okay.
What is our current status of leftover revenue for this fiscal year? Given the fact that we not finished September, but we should be very close to knowing exactly what it is. Do we know what it is?
Do you have another off the top of your head? I know you ran me a report the other day. Here it is. Over budget and. Yeah. Yeah. They're pretty close. The difference in revenue and expense, and I don't have a date on this page, but it's in the last week or ten days. The difference between revenue and expense is six hundred thirty-nine dollars and four cents.
That's not possible.
Between over and under. This is just looking at council, like I showed you all a report previously that was over budget. And that means more income came in, or more money, both, and more money was spent on a line item than was budgeted. So when we go and do our budget adjustments for the end of this fiscal year, it will reflect, you know, if a line item was spent more or less here and there, but when you net it out on this report of what budget, of accounts or buckets that were over, either more money was made, was earned or spent, the net is six hundred thirty-nine dollars and four cents. So we're not through yet, but that's the report.
So you're going to be, you're going to be negative?
Well, we're still taking in income too, so we should be, be close to this.
So how much, how many items did we just go through that we still had money left on? I would think several that we said we had to spend that, which, the technology.
I guess, I guess I'm answering something different than what you asked. Let me think about that a second. This is what we brought in and expended, what I just gave the information about. You're asking for money that's not.
Budgeted, not spent.
Not spent yet. I don't have a report about that in front of me, I don't want to speak to it, it just popped up in my head.
Okay, so I understand what you're saying, I just revenue came in, money went out, the difference is six hundred dollars between those two. It's not anything to do with what we budgeted first to receive.
Right, so like the encumbered money, we know we're going to carry that sitting there.
Right.
I couldn't tell you what that number is without looking it up specifically.
And so that would be, that's why I said it's hard to believe, because I know we're giving.
Yeah, yeah, I answered the wrong question, sorry.
That's all right, no, maybe it's the way I asked it, but, okay.
Okay. Back to our agenda then. We're on item five A, adoption of the budget ordinance for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Consider and take action to adopt budget ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero five for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. I'm going to read the one that's still. All right, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero five is an ordinance approving and adopting the general municipal budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six, the budget, for the city of Simonton, Texas, called the city, making appropriations for the city for this year as reflected in the budget, establishing the procedure for intra-budget transfers and containing other provisions relating to the subject. Whereas, within the time and in the manner required by law, the mayor presented to the city council of the city of Simonton, Texas, a proposed general budget of expenditures of the city for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, beginning October one, twenty twenty-five, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, called the budget. And, whereas pursuant to a motion of the council, and after notice required by law, a public hearing on the budget was held on September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, at six thirty PM, at which hearing, all persons had the right to be present and to be heard, and those who requested to be heard were heard. And whereas, the council has considered the budget and has made such changes to the budget as in its judgment were warranted by law and were in the best interest of the citizens and taxpayers of the city. And whereas, pursuant to fifty-one oh-two dot zero zero seven, Texas Local Government Code, a record vote of the council was taken. And, whereas, a copy of the budget has been filed with the city secretary, and the council now desires to approve and adopt the budget. And now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Simonton, Texas, that the facts and recitation set forth, set forth in the preamble of this ordinance are hereby found to be true and correct, that the city council of the city of Simonton, Texas, hereby approves and adopts the budget described in the preamble of this ordinance, a copy of which is attached heretofore as exhibit A, and is made part of this ordinance for all purposes, and a copy of which is filed with the city secretary. The budget shall remain on file in the office of the city secretary as a public record. That the city secretary is hereby directed to place on the budget a cover sheet containing the language required by section one oh-two point zero zero seven of the Texas Local Government Code, that in support of the budget and by virtue of the adoption of the budget, including any and all changes made to the budget and several amounts specified, specified for the purposes named in the budget, are hereby appropriated to and for such purposes. That the council takes cognizance of the fact that in order to facilitate operations of the city and its various departments and activities, and to make adjustments occasioned by events transpiring during the fiscal year, some transfer may be necessary to and from some accounts contained within the budget as originally adopted. Accordingly, should the mayor from time to time determine that transfers are necessary from unexpended funds in one or more budget accounts to another budget account, and the same may be accomplished without creating a deficit in the requirements of any city department or activity, then the mayor shall recommend such transfers to the council. Upon approval by council, an amendment sheet reflecting such transfers, transfer or transfers shall be attached to the budget as specifically adopted, whereupon the council shall treat such funds as if they had been thus budgeted through this ordinance. Passed, approved, and adopted this day. Do we have a motion on the ordinance?
I'll make a motion.
Are you making a motion to approve the budget? Do you want to have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Yes. I have, I guess, a dilemma going on in my mind, based on knowledge that was brought to us today, and the posting of the budget and the ability for the public to actually review and see it. and the posting of the budget and the ability for the public to actually review and see it online versus the fact that it was available in the office and had someone wanted to go into the office and get it, or through PIR or whatever method, they could've gotten it. And that we actually started the budget process on August 19. But the fact that we didn't actually make it available to everyone in the public online is interpreted, and is basically loosely interpreted by the law as to what the consequences would be by not doing it and what would happen to us and/or the city because the city would be the one that gets involved, is might decide to sue us or whatever. I'm just having a dilemma. And because I'm having that dilemma, I have to reserve the fact that I would rather us not approve the budget. But that's that, and find another way to get the budget approved at some rate. Now, right now, we're looking at two different rates. Everything we've looked at today is 28, 28, 28, 28. The no new revenue rate, which is what is being attempted to make us go to by 1851, is the 27 point whatever rate. In my mind, if I was looking at just the 27 rate, I could almost go with saying, okay, we got the budget matched to the 27 rate. I guess I have to just live with the fact that we may be in jeopardy of some kind from somebody trying to do something against the city. I kinda have to note, in no uncertain terms, my interpretation is, yes, we made a mistake. We didn't post it online in time. It was never, I don't think it was ever done intentionally, it was just a mistake. All of that considered, I just have to, from an ethical standpoint, say I can't, I can't move on this. That's it.
Okay, appreciate that.
Thank you.
I will just add that we have consulted with our legal counsel about both matters. The Senate bill that has been discussed previously, and Andy just mentioned it, and the deadline, whether or not it's affecting our ability to use the no new revenue for the property tax rate. And our city attorney's opinion is that it will be effective for budgets adopted September 1 and after so that it does not limit the city at this stage for this budget. And that the sufficient notice for the 30 days that you're, from the website that you're mentioning about, is that the administrative error, if there was one, would not be sufficient to derail the notices or the budget.
Yeah, good.
I had something.
Absolutely.
So I feel comfortable, yeah, I've seen what's Facebook, I get what... But it wasn't, we've been talking about this for how many meetings? I've spoke to two state senators and a AG's office and tried to become troublemakers and not to run around and follow theirs. And this new law, 1851, SB 10, did not get voted in, that it is, they haven't even set some rules for it. So I think we're absolutely fine. If the attorney general comes back to us later on, okay, we'll deal with it then. But we have too much stuff to do. And I, I mean, Eric, I get exactly where you are. I've thought a lot about this, but after all the conversations I've had and then with our attorney, I'm absolutely fine with it. We got stuff we need to get done. That's on one vote.
Any further discussion? All right, so we have a motion and a second to adopt the budget ordinance, which reflects the property tax rate, which will be decided tomorrow. But this budget is based on the property tax rate of .281130 for $100 of value. Will you take a roll call vote? Councilmember Kelly Carlson?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrew Perry?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Justin Houdro?
Aye.
Councilmember Eric Duvall?
No.
Thank you, council. The motion passes and we have a budget. Thank you, everyone, for coming, for participating, for all of the workshops that we've had to get to this point and for bringing data to us of all different kinds. We will adjourn the meeting at 9:15. We'll scale to 5:30.
5:30.